Hello, welcome to our bookshop in Tring. I mean, albeit we're not actually in our bookshop. Rob's in London somewhere and I'm in my sitting room. But thank you all for joining us. We've got loads of lovely schools. I think there must be around 2,000 students watching this. Children in one place or another, including, I think the furthest away is Cardiff. So hello Cardiff, I hope the weather's as nice. Actually, it's a bit gloomy. So without further ado, because you don't want to be talking to me, I'm going to hand you over to Rob Bidoff. Remember, I want all your questions on the Q and A. So without further ado, Rob Bidoff.
Oh, thanks, Ben. Thanks for having me. It's lovely to be here and speaking to so many children on this. Yes, slightly gloomy here in London, slightly overcast. I predict a little bit of rain later, but it's lovely to be here. Before I start, I just want to say hello to somebody who is a student at Bridgewater School. Her name is Gracie Callis. She's in wagtail class, year one, and I also want to say hello to Mrs Keeney and Miss Stoller. Hello, hello everyone, and hello all of you. Right, we're going to start. This is what we're going to do today, if it's all right with you guys. I thought I'd start by telling you a little bit, a sort of super speedy history of how I became an author and an illustrator. Then I thought we might do a little drawing together. So you might need a piece of paper and a pencil in about 10 minutes' time. And then I thought I would read you a story. So I hope that sounds like a good plan. And then I think, as Ben said, there's going to be time for some questions at the end. So without further ado, let's see if I can get this to work. I'm going to try and share my screen to show you a few slides. Here we go. There we go. I'm hoping this is going to work. You should be able to see my name on your screen. And now you should be able to see a picture of a little boy holding a football. Now, believe it or not, this little boy is me. When I was, I reckon, how old do you think I am? About five or six years old. And when I was five or six years old, there were two things that I wanted to be when I grew up. One of them was a footballer. My uncle was a footballer, so I wanted to be just like him. But the other thing I wanted to be is something called an illustrator. So somebody who draws pictures for their job. Now, the reason that I wanted to be an illustrator is because of this drawing here. Now, this drawing, I did this drawing when I was in reception. So I was about four or five years old when I did this drawing. And the reason I did this picture is because in my school, there was a drawing competition ahead of the summer fair. So it must have been around about this time of year, I guess. And it was a Mayfair. And so I drew this picture of some children dancing around a maypole. And I don't know if you can see, but if you look up towards the top left-hand corner, you should be able to see that somebody has written a letter P on my picture. And that P stands for prize, because I was very lucky and I won first prize in the drawing competition in the whole school. And I can really remember my head teacher coming into the classroom and saying, right, which one of you is Robert? And I put my hand up. I thought I was going to get told off, to be honest. And he said, no, congratulations, you've won first prize in the drawing competition. Brilliant, I thought. What's my prize going to be? It's probably going to be a new bike, isn't it? Something like that, maybe, I don't know, a Nintendo Switch, something really cool like that. Oh, no, it was neither of those things. Do you know what my prize was? It was a pencil. Now, that does not sound particularly exciting, does it? But do you know what? I really treasured that pencil, because that pencil stood for something. It stood for the fact that someone thought I was good at drawing. And I don't really think anyone had ever said that to me before. So what happened was, as I got older and even more stylish, do you think I looked pretty cool? Oh, yeah, look at that tie, pretty cool. As I got older and even more stylish, I carried on drawing. One of my favourite things to do was I used to write stories for my favourite characters from the books that my teachers and my parents would read to me. And I'd draw the pictures and I'd staple them down the side to make little books. I'd make my own comics. I spend a lot of my spare time inventing these little characters and little adventures for them to have. And I draw all the pictures. I spend a lot of time copying my favourite cartoon characters. Now, listen, everyone, this is a really good way to get better at drawing, because you get to see how other people put those drawings together. And I think I did this one here when I was about nine or 10 years old. So by the time I was nine or 10, I was getting really good at things like, you know, going slow when you get to the edges, when you're colouring in, to make sure it's nice and neat. And my teachers at school started saying to me that they thought, actually, I was really quite good at drawing. And that maybe when I grew up, I should think about becoming an illustrator, becoming somebody who draws pictures for their jobs. So as I got bigger and bigger and bigger, I kept on practising. And then eventually, when I was 18, I went to a place called Art College, which is just like school, but you get to draw and paint pictures all the time. And at Art College, I spent three years painting fruit. That's what I did, basically. You name a fruit, I probably did a painting of it. But then I had to find a job and I could not find a job as an apple painter anywhere. So I ended up going to work for lots of very famous newspapers and magazines. And it was a really nice job, but I always remembered those days when I used to make my own comics and things. I used to think, oh, that would be, that would have been a nice thing to do. Then something happened to me that changed everything. I had children. These are my three daughters. Poppy is the little one, Kitty in the middle, and then Ella's the big one. Can you see that cat who snuck into the bottom of my picture? That is my cat. She's got a really embarrassing name. If I tell you my cat's name, you promise you won't laugh? Yeah, okay. My cat is called Catface. I know, what a stupid name. Catface the cat. She's not my only pet. Somebody, if you've watched my Draw With Rob videos, you might know that I have a little dog too. My dog is called Ringo. Would you like to see my dog? Here he is, here he is, running through the fields. There's Ringo. Ringo is much more famous than I am, much more popular than I am. Whenever I speak to children, they always just, they don't want to talk to me, they just want to see Ringo. So there you go. I thought I'd show you Ringo very quickly. Right, yes, what I was saying, everything changed for me when I had children. And that's because I started buying lots of picture books to read to them at bedtime. Now, if you recognise any of these books, do shout out. Has anyone seen this one? What about this one? Or this one? I'm going to go quite quickly here. You might have seen lots of these books before. Well, I really loved reading these books at bedtime. And as I would read them, I would think to myself, this looks like a nice thing to do. I think I might have a go at writing a children's book. I bet you've all seen this one, the tiger who came to tea. So I thought, right, I'm going to have a go at writing a children's book. Now, if you want to get good at something, you need to practise, don't you? So I thought, right, I need to practise doing some drawings of things that children might like to look at. So I went away with my pens and my pencils and I drew things like this, a pirate ship. Dinosaurs, children like dinosaurs. What about spaceships and aliens, stuff like that? Then I thought I need to practise drawing children themselves. So here we go, lots of girls, lots of boys. Then I thought, there's always lots of animals in children's books, isn't there? So I need to practise drawing animals. So here we go, lions and tigers and things, lots of other animals here. And what I did, I printed all these pictures out onto big bits of paper. I put those bits of paper into a folder. I took that folder into London, which is where all the publishers work. Now, publishers are people that make books. And I showed them all of my drawings and I said, what do you think? Do you think I'm good enough to write and illustrate a children's book? And when they got to this page here with all the animals on, there was one group of animals that they liked more than any other. Who wants to have a guess at what the animals they liked best were? Shout it out, everyone shout it out. Right, whoever said penguins, you were right. It was the penguins. They said, can you think of a story for your penguin characters? So I thought to myself, right, penguins, they're a kind of bird, right? But they're a type of bird that doesn't fly. I think it might be fun to get a penguin up into the sky. Now, how can I get a penguin up into the sky? I know, what if he goes out flying a kite on a very windy day and ends up getting blown away? So I wrote this, this was my first story. I wrote Blown Away, it's all about Penguin Blue. He goes out with his kite on a windy day and he gets blown away across the sea. And they end up in a place that penguins aren't usually found. They end up, they end up on a jungle island and they have to think of a clever way of getting back home again. And I showed it to the publishers and they liked it and they turned it into a book. And I couldn't believe it. I would go past bookshops and see my book in the window and it's an unbelievable feeling. It still is, I still can't quite believe that I'm an author. But the best thing about it is they let me write more books. So I wrote this one called All About A Bear Who Loses His Ground. One called Odd Dog Out, all about a sausage dog who doesn't fit in with the other sausage dogs. I wrote another penguin story, this time they were playing at being pirates called Sunk. My middle daughter Kitty had an imaginary friend called Kevin, who was vanilla and pink and covered in fur and had one tooth. And I thought that would make a good story. So I wrote a story about Kevin. I've written lots of dinosaur stories too. One called Show and Tell about some children who bring in some really funny things for show and tell at school. And I also get to draw the covers for other people's books sometimes. So some of you might have read Flat Stanley, I drew all the covers for that. And here's a few more, and even this one, I'm really proud of. Michael Bond is the man who wrote the Paddington books. So some of you might have read those, or you might have seen the Paddington films. Well, he's the man who wrote that. And I got to illustrate his Parsley The Lion story. So I'm super, super proud of that. And another thing that I do is something that some of you might have seen over lockdown. It's a thing called Draw With Rob. Now, what I do, I've made lots of videos where I show children and grown-ups, I guess, how to draw my characters. And I do it in a kind of step-by-step way that you can watch on YouTube. And then you can pause and you can copy what I do. And it's been really fun and it's been super popular. I mean, it's been, the videos have been viewed millions and millions of times around the world. So I'm really proud of it. And I love it when all the children send me their drawings. Here we are, here's a selection of the mandrills and we did some pumpkins at Halloween. Here's some peacocks that we did and the children, they always send me pictures of them holding their drawings, looking very proud and very smiley. And I really, really love it, because the main thing I really like is that lots of children don't think they're very good at drawing, but I say everyone can draw. You just might need a little bit of help with the order. Right then, oh, another thing I should tell you about quickly. Some of you might have joined in with this. Last May, we broke the world record for the world's largest ever online class. And we drew this whale here. And it was super exciting, because 45,000 households joined in with me. Now, we think that's about 150,000 people were drawing along with me. So if you guys were one of those people, then you are a record breaker too. So high five, I'm giving you virtual high fives. Congratulations, everybody. And some of you, if you haven't seen the videos, maybe you've seen the books. There's lots of really good, if I do say so myself, activity books out there that you can find and you can do draw-alongs and all sorts of things in those too. Anyway, right, I wonder if Ben could change the camera. I need to stop sharing my screen, don't I? That's what I need to do. I'll stop sharing my screen. I wonder if Ben could change the camera to the drawing camera? Because I think we should do a little draw-along together now. So what you're going to need is a piece of paper and a pencil, maybe something to colour with afterwards. But maybe you can do the colouring part when you go back to your classrooms. But we are going to do a little drawing together now. And I thought it would be nice if we drew one of the characters from the story that I am going to read to you in 10 minutes or so. Okay, so grab your piece of paper, grab your pencil. This is how it's going to work. I'm going to draw a little bit of the drawing on my piece of paper here. Then I'll stop and you copy exactly what I do. Then I'll draw a bit more, then you draw, then I draw, then you draw, I draw, you draw, I draw, you draw, I draw, you draw. And by the end, we should end up with a lovely picture. Okay, let's start then, shall we? Right, the first thing that I want you to do is, very easy, we are just going to draw a horizontal line towards the top of our piece of paper, like that. How long is that? That's about the length of my little finger. That's roughly how long that line has to be. So a nice, easy start to our drawing. Okay, the next thing we're going to do, this is where it gets a little bit trickier. I want you, we're basically going to join this end of the line up with this end of the line. And we're going to do it in a sort of semicircle, but we're not going to do it in a smooth semicircle. We're going to do it in a sort of zigzaggy semicircle. So lots of straight lines to join that shape up, like that. So you should end up with something a bit like that, a bit like a hedgehog, I guess. Okay, so hopefully you've all done that now. The next thing we're going to do, underneath that shape, I want you to draw a semicircle. In fact, let's draw two semicircles, like that. So it looks like a bit, I guess it looks a bit like a sort of pointy skateboard now, doesn't it? And then inside those semicircles, I want you to draw two more semicircles, a bit smaller, like that. One, two, and let's colour that small one in. There you go, it does look like a skateboard now, doesn't it? But it's not a skateboard. Okay, the next thing to do is, we're going to do a vertical line coming straight down out of that right-hand shape. And we're going to do one coming out of the left-hand shape too, same length. So two straight lines. I wonder if anyone can tell what we might be drawing yet. I tell you what, I'll give you a clue. These bits, they're eyes. I'm sure you'd already guessed that though, haven't you? Okay, the next thing to do is, from this line on the left, I want you to curve around and head out to the side, just a little bit further than where this shape finishes, like that. And we're going to do exactly the same on the other side, but like a mirror image. So we'll head out to the side there as well. Then I want you to curve around, start heading down your page. But again, we're going to do these kind of little zigzaggy shapes, like that. Let's do four little zigzaggy shapes, like that. Okay, a little bit tricky that bit, but I'm sure you are equal to the task. We're going to do the same over here, but the other way around. So one, two, three, four. There we go. It's starting to take shape. It looks a bit like a sort of funny bird, doesn't it? Like an emu or an ostrich or something, but it's neither of those things. All will become clear soon, I promise. The next thing to do is, I want us to join this point and this point up in a pretty much straight line. So straight across like that. Now, lots of people, you can see, mine isn't perfect, is it? This side is a bit different to this side. And I don't think that matters. Don't worry if you make a mistake. The worst thing you can do if you make a mistake is screw your drawing up, throw it away and start again. I think you've got to keep on drawing, keep drawing. Because do you know what? Sometimes it's those little mistakes that make your drawing unique and they make it beautiful. I honestly do think that. Those little happy accidents are what make a drawing sort of like human. Otherwise, we don't want it to look like a robot's done the drawing. We don't want it to be too perfect, do we? We need to have those little mistakes. I'm left-handed, so I often sort of smudge things. I always leave it in there, because it's just, it's just part of the artwork, isn't it? So don't worry if yours doesn't look exactly like mine, that doesn't matter at all. Right, the next thing we need to do, we need to draw another semicircle. There's lots of semicircles in this picture. So we're going to draw a sort of semicircle there in the middle. So it looks a bit like a smiley mouth, but it's not a smiley mouth. We're going to join that up across there. Still looks like a mouth, doesn't it? And we're going to colour it in. So it still looks like a mouth, but it's not a mouth. It's actually going to be a nose. And this is how I do my little nostril parts of noses, particularly for animals. What I do is a little swirl coming off to the side, like that. One there, and then we're going to do another one here. And I don't really know why I do it like that, but I just like drawing swirly shapes, I think. But that now looks a bit more like a nose, does it? I don't know now. Now that I look at it, I'm not sure that it does, but we're going to, we're going to say it's a nose, okay? Okay, let's draw, the next thing, we're going to draw a straight line down from the middle to join up those two shapes, like that. And at the bottom of that straight line, I want you to draw yet another semicircle that we're going to colour in. And that's going to be a little mouth this time. And let's add some sort of whiskery bits here. So I want you to add just four little dots there and four little dots there. It's starting to take shape now, isn't it? I wonder if you can guess what kind of animal this is? I'll tell you in a minute, don't worry. Okay, the next thing to do is a straight line, a vertical line, one going up there and another one going up there, like that. Okay, the next thing I want you to do is imagine that this straight line here went straight through that sort of spiky shape that we drew right at the beginning. And we're going to do yet another semicircle. It's going to come all the way up and around and go down there. So it looks like it's sort of joining up with that line. And that's going to be our animal's head. Right, shall I tell you what kind of animal we're drawing? We are drawing a doggy. It's a doggy. And if you want to be specific, it's a schnauzer. That's what we're drawing here. So we need to give our dog some ears. This is how we do the ears. Up here, I want you to draw like a curved line that just sort of touches the side of the head, like that. Okay, let's do exactly the same on this side, another curved line. It just sort of touches the head like that. Then from the top of this right-hand curve, we're going to draw a line straight across and straight down to join it up. So it's like a bit like a sort of quarter of a circle or like a little piece of cake viewed from above. Let's do the same here, we're going to go up and across. And then I want you just to draw a little line from that corner of that ear and from that corner of that ear. And there we go, and dog has ears. And the final part of this drawing, we need to give him or her a little beard. So we're just going to draw a sort of little spiky shape, like that, underneath. And there we go, we have a doggy, a schnauzer. Now, I'm going to colour mine in super quickly now. You might want to do yours when you get back to your classrooms. But the good thing about this particular dog is you can do the colouring really quickly. You don't have to be too careful. Can you see how I'm sort of going up and down with my colouring, like that? And I'm not really making sure it's really neatly coloured. And the reason I'm doing that is because I want this doggy to appear like he or she. This one, my one's a he actually. I want him to appear like he's furry. And so when you do lots of up and down lines like this with your colour, it makes it look like your dog, a little furry chap. So here we go, I'm doing, showing you a few little tips and tricks here. And I'm being very quick now, but you can see I'm just colouring a bit darker underneath the eyebrows. And it makes it look like his eyebrows are kind of sticking out a little bit and his eyes are sort of set back in his head, which this particular dog, that's what they look like. So there you go, a few little colouring tricks. I'm doing this very quickly. I'm just going to add a bit of sort of silvery grey to these bits. You might be wondering why I've done my dog blue. Well, if you've watched my Draw With Rob videos, you know that colour is a very, very important part. And I think we can do anything with colour. We don't have to stick to the rules. If you want to draw a bright pink doggy, you can, why not? It's fun. Let's add a little bit, this is my favourite colour, this one. It's like an aqua marine. I'm just going to add a few little bits and pieces here and there, just to make my dog lovely and colourful. A little bit more grey over this side. But can you see, see lots and lots of very scribbly lines? And it makes your dog look nice and furry. So the very, so maybe you can colour yours when you go back to your classroom. But the very last thing you need to do is sign your picture. We always need to sign our pictures so that everybody knows who has produced these lovely works of art. So there we go, I hope your dog, you hope you're pleased with your doggy drawings. This dog here is called Buddy. I'm going to give him a name. He's called Buddy and he's a star. Well, he's sort of like a, he's got a bit part in the story that I'm going to read to you today. In fact, he only appears once, but I want you to keep your eyes out for him when I read the story. Okay, see if you can spot him. So there we go, that's how to draw a schnauzer. So I wonder if Ben could now turn the camera back to me? Why would you not want to look at my lovely face? Don't answer that, don't answer that. Oh, can you do that, Ben?
Yeah, you're back on gallery view.
Oh, is it me then? Can I share my screen again?
Can you see, can you see that? I'm going to remove.
All I can see is the shop on my screen, but that might just be me.
No, that might just be you, I can see you.
You can see me, all right, so I'm spotlight, okay, I trust you. I'm going to share my screen. Let me, you tell me if you can see my screen in a second. There we go. Can you see my screen? It's just a black screen at the moment, isn't it? That's not much good. Here we go, can you see that? Can you see the words dog gone? Okay, so the story I'm going to read to you now, boys and girls, is called Dog Gone. It's my latest book. And remember, see if you can spot, what was his name? Buddy, see if you can spot Buddy. He's towards the end of the story, that's a, that's a little clue for you. Now, this story, before I start, I think, I've got a dog called Ringo, as I've told you. And since I've had the dog, I've realised that it isn't the humans that own the dogs, it's the dogs that own the humans. You think about it, I do everything he wants me to do, whenever he wants me to do it. When he wants feeding, I feed him. When he wants a treat, I give him a treat. When he wants a walk, I give him a walk. Do you know what? I even pick up his poo. Now, that's, I mean, come on, who, who's the boss here? Of course, it's, it's the dog, isn't it? So this story is called Dog Gone. But can you see that little doggy up there is a little pug called Teddy? And he's saying, the day I lost my human. So this is a story about Teddy the pug who loses his human one day. So if you are sitting comfortably, I will begin. I'm Edward Pugglesworth, how do you do? And this is the house where I live with my crew. There's Foxy, Lord Squeakerton, Hot Dog, the Bears, and Dave, my pet human. I keep him upstairs. He's not too much trouble, he's tidy and neat. He plays with his ball and he eats the odd treat. I love my pet human, he's loyal and true. But sometimes I think that I should have got two. Oh, can you see there, Dave, he's playing cards all on his own. He doesn't have anyone to play with, does he? Poor Dave. And now for our story. I'll always remember that crisp autumn day at the end of September. I woke Dave at eight with a good morning bark and took him straight out for his walk in the park. The air cooled our breath as we kicked through the leaves. We bumped into Shadow, we said hi to Jeeves, we nodded to Heron, gave Rabbit a wave. And then we both froze and I hid behind Dave. For there in the shed by the merry-go-round, they say that a terrible troll can be found. With fur-covered face and huge eyes of bright green, he loves chasing dogs with his eating machine. My heart was a flutter, a leaf on the breeze, as we crept past the shed and the dark twisted trees. And then we both ran just as fast as we could and we didn't stop running till cherry tree wood. Relieved, we decided to play with Dave's ball. And that's when we noticed the rain start to fall. A rumble of thunder, the wind gathered speed. It's home time, I woofed and put Dave on his lead. We set off at pace, but the storm came in fast. And then by the bench, I felt something zoom past. Two squirrels, a flurry of grey, white and black. You're acorns, I shouted, you've dropped them, come back. I picked up the nuts and began to give chase. I flew through those woods like a rocket through space. Alas, I could not catch that squirrely pair, so I turned to my human. But Dave wasn't there. I retraced my steps, where on earth did he go? I bumped into Heron, but she didn't know and neither did Rabbit, he hadn't a clue. I'd lost my pet human, what was I to do? I ran to the bandstand, I circled the pond, I looked through the wood and the meadow beyond. Finally, with a cold feeling of dread, I went back to check out the scary troll shed. I pushed with my nose and the door opened wide. I took a deep breath and I tiptoed inside. And there, in the darkness, an awful surprise, for looking straight at me were two bright green eyes. My hackles shot up and with trembling knees, I ran from the shed through the dark twisted trees. I zigged and I zagged, I could hear him behind me. I needed to hide where that troll wouldn't find me. But then, a dead end, I was trapped in between the fence and the terrible eating machine. My legs turned to jelly, my thoughts were a muddle. And then the troll grabbed me and gave me a cuddle. Hello there, he said, what a handsome young fellow. I've seen you before with that chap dressed in yellow. Oh dear, have you lost him? Well, that just won't do. Fear not, little doggy, I'll find him for you. We rode his machine to the place that sells tea. And there was my human, as safe as can be. A whirlwind of huggles and licks and embraces. Kindness, it's found in the strangest of places. And so, dearest reader, our story ends here. A day of adventure, new friendships and cheer. Have fun in the park, but I do recommend you keep a close eye on your two-legged friend. Look, can you see Buddy? Can you see him? There he is. Blink and you miss it. And there you go. That is the end of our little story. Let me see if I can stop sharing the story. There we go. That was the end. I hope you enjoyed it. It's one of my favourite ones that I have written. I really like it. And yeah, super fun, super fun. I hope you loved it. Now then, I think we have time for a few questions, don't we, Ben? Is that right?
We have, we have, we have. So we need all the schools, all the teachers in schools to um, switch on to sending some questions. Please use the Q and A function. Hopefully you see that along the bottom. If you haven't got a Q and A for some reason, use the chat function. I know um, Miss Burley from Bishopwood's already cottoned on to on to the questions. Uh, and so I've already got a few in, um, which is great. Firstly, Rob, thank you very much for everything you've done um, today. I think the drawing uh, is gorgeous and that story is wonderful. So thank you very much. Um, shall I hide that? The picture of, um, let's remove. Just remove that. Brilliant. So um, let's go with question A. This is a really hard thing. It's almost like you choosing your favourite daughter, I suspect. Do you have a favourite book that you've illustrated? That's from Isabella from Bishopwood.
Yeah, it's just like choosing my favourite daughter. Um, well.
Do you have a favourite daughter?
Of course, I've got a favourite daughter. No, I haven't. I haven't. If they're, in case they're watching, I definitely haven't got a favourite daughter. Um, my favourite book, well, my first book is very, very close to my heart because it took me quite a long time to get published. I know it didn't really sound like it when I was doing my little talk thing earlier, but it did take me quite a few years to get published. So when it finally happened, um, it was a super, super exciting moment. So I'm very, very fond of my first book. But apart from that, my, I guess my book, the one that people seem to like the most around the world is Odd Dog Out. The one about the sausage dog who doesn't fit in with the other sausage dogs. Lots of people seem to really, really like that one. And that is a really fun one to draw as well. I had to draw about five hundred sausage dogs uh, in that book, but it was super, super fun. So yeah, I'd say probably Odd Dog Out.
Brilliant, brilliant. And oh, I love Sophie. Uh, this is another question from Bishopwood. Love Sophie's question. Do you use the pencil you won at the prize to help? Have you still got that pencil by any chance?
Unfortunately, um, I I don't still have that pencil. I mean, I got it when I was about five. So that is like, that's almost twenty years ago now. And if you believe that, you believe anything. It's much more like forty years ago, unfortunately. So no, I don't have the pencil that I won. Um, unfortunately, my, I've still got that picture that I showed you that my mum kept that, but she didn't keep the pencil. But um, but yeah, it's more the the idea of the pencil that was super important to me. And if I did have it, I would definitely be using it for all of my drawings.
Yeah, yeah, I think. Um, right, Seb from Long Maston. This is a, the classic end of the event question, but I'll ask it now. Otherwise, I'll I'll lose it in the long trailer questions. Uh, what will your next story be?
Oh, that is a very good question, Seb. Well, you remember I just said my favourite book was Odd Dog Out. I have written another story in the Odd Dog Out universe, and it's a Christmas story. So it's going to be called An Odd Dog Christmas. And that will be coming out towards the end of the, well, I think it's coming out in October, I think. Um, so yeah, that was fun. And I've just finished drawing it actually. So it's a very strange thing to be sat here in April in springtime, drawing pictures, very snowy, Christmasy pictures. It's quite a strange thing, but that's that's what we have to do. And I've actually, and I've also got another book coming out in September, which is a slightly older book. In fact, I'm going to show you a little sneak peek here. It's a novel. I've written a novel. Like so, um, a middle grade book, so it's like Harry Potter age book. And it's called Peanut Jones and the Illustrated City. This won't be the final cover. I'm doing a different final cover. This is just the proof copy. But it's, um, I'm very proud of it. There's lots of illustrations inside it. And it's very exciting for me because it's slightly new for me. Um, so it's for, I would say for eight years plus and um, yeah, I think you're going to like it. And that is all about a magic pencil, believe it or not. So yeah, there we go.
I'm going to speak to your publicist about that. So maybe we'll get you to appear in Tring, um, maybe in person. And in fact, I'll speak to Jess as well about you in the autumn. So for our festival, I know everyone would love that. Um. There's Melody. Here we are, Melody. Uh, what would you like to be if you didn't write and illustrate books?
Very good question, Melody. And there was a clue in my little slideshow earlier, actually. Do you remember there was that picture of me holding the football? I would have loved to have been a footballer. As I said, my uncle was a footballer. He played a long time ago, but he played in the Premiership. And um, I would have loved to have done that. And I was quite good at football at school. I was quite good. But when I got to the age of about seventeen, I had to make a choice between going to art college and becoming a footballer, because I needed, if I, I had an offer to be a semi-professional footballer, but I'd have needed to train a lot and I wouldn't have been able to go to university. And I thought, I was quite honest with myself and I thought, I'm quite good, but I'm not sure I'm good enough to play for Arsenal, which is my favourite team. And that's all I wanted to do. So I decided I would stick with the illustration. I think I made the right decision in the end. But, you know, if I could live my life all over again, I might have a go at trying to be a footballer, who knows?
There's going to be a million questions saying, what football team do you support?
Arsenal. Come on, New Reds. We're not very good at the moment, I'm afraid, Arsenal. But um, we have got a very big game tonight, so fingers crossed that we win tonight.
I'm a, I'm a Leeds fan and I can't believe we're, we're currently above Arsenal in the league.
Deservedly so, deservedly so.
Lovely. Um, there's Noah. That's not the sort of question you should be asking anybody. He's asking, how old is Rob? Noah from Coed Class in Cardiff.
It's all right, Noah. I am. It's quite hard to say it out loud sometimes, isn't it? But I'm forty-eight years old. Forty, can you imagine, Noah? Can you imagine being that old? I can't, I can't even imagine being that. I don't feel forty-eight. I feel about twelve, but I am forty-eight. You can tell by the grey in my beard. There's a clue there.
Well, yeah, I'm I'm four years older than you and um, yeah, I'm getting a bit.
That's not fair. You've got no grey hair. What's that about?
I don't know what that is. Honestly, I have no idea. Um, how many? How many, how many books were there in total? This is from Eve in Swallow Class at Bridgewater.
How many I've written? How many books have I written?
That's the question, yes.
That's the question. Um, I have written, well, there's ten, ten books that I've written myself and illustrated so far uh, that have been published. Um, but I've illustrated, I don't know how many I've illustrated for other people as well. I put, I mean, probably twenty or thirty for other people as well. So it's quite a few books with my name on it somewhere. But yeah, ten of my own so far.
Fantastic. Oh, yeah, I love, um. I mean, who who are your favourite authors that you've worked with? I suspect it's a hard, hard answer to to give, but.
Okay, that's quite tough. I mean, the one that I guess I'm most proud of is that Michael, is Michael Bond. Unfortunately, he passed away a few years ago, but I did get to meet him because we shared a publisher. But yeah, it was, it's such, it's such an honour to illustrate the Parsley the Lion stories for Michael, Michael Bond, because he'd obviously.
We'll know Michael Bond from his um, his work.
Yes, exactly. You would have, if you haven't read the books, you should do. Um, but I'm sure lots of you have seen the films, which are brilliant, the films. But yeah, he's probably the one that I'm most proud of. But I've worked, I've done the Flat Stanley stories as well, and I've worked with people like Philip Arda. And I don't know, some of you might have read um, the Freddie Yates book that came out a year or so ago that I illustrated. Jenny Pearson wrote that. And that, if you haven't read that, you should read it. It's really, really funny. It's really good. So yeah, all the books I I illustrate, I get to read them first, so I can, I only do ones that I really like. So um, yeah, I like them all, really.
If your name's on it, it's going to be brilliant.
I think so.
So um, Miss Burley from Three B at Bishopwood asks, what other illustrators inspire you?
That's a very good question. Um, well, my my favourite children's book of all time, I think, is How the Grinch Stole Christmas by Doctor Hughes. Um, that's not so much for the illustrations, although they are brilliant. But I really, the reason I like that so much is because of the rhyming story. Because he's obviously the master of rhyme, and you will have noticed my stories rhyme too. So he's kind of the the benchmark. So I love that book. But then the ones that I remember from my childhood are things like Tiger Who Came to Tea, Dogger by Shirley Hughes. There's a guy called Richard Scarry, who I absolutely love. His, his books are all really big, really big, big books, really brilliant illustrations of things like, he'll, he'll draw a ship, but he'll do a cross section of the ship. So you can see inside it how everything works. And he's really brilliant at that. And I used to love those books. I still love them now, because you can spend ages looking at each illustration. And you know, even if it's the tenth time you've read the book, you'll always spot something new. And so I try to do that in my books as well. So he's a real um, inspiration for me. So I would say he's probably my favourite illustrator, actually, Richard Scarry.
The Wagtail Class at Bridgewater, which, um, you know, they would like to know if you will write a comic or graphic novel ever.
Oh, that is a good question. Um, I haven't really thought about it, to be honest, but maybe it's not some, certainly not something that I would rule out. Um, yeah, at the moment, I'm just too, um, weirdly, we work so far in advance. I I know what I'm going to be working on until I've got a wall chart up here. So I know what I'm doing until the end of twenty twenty-four. Isn't that weird? Um, but I literally know everything, everything's planned out that I'm going to do up until that point. And so maybe after that, maybe I should add graphic novel to the list, because I would like to do. I've read lots of graphic novels and I really, really love them. I think they're very, very hard to do well. But maybe I should have a go. Never rule anything out. Good question, guys.
You know what? I'm taken by what great questions we're getting and coming in from all schools. Um, Barbara asks, do you still paint apples?
You know what? I still draw apples all the time, right? You know, when you're on the phone or you're sort of absentmindedly sort of doodling? I do it all the time. Whenever I'm on the phone to somebody, I've got, you know, obviously, I've, I mean, my art studio here, so I've got pieces of paper and pencils around. And I'm always sort of talking away, blah, 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 and I'm doodling away. And every time I finish the phone call and look down at my piece of paper, I've always drawn an apple. So and I, and I sort of do them subliminally. So it's my do, my go-to doodle of choice is an apple. And I guess that comes from the fact that I spent three years painting apples at art college.
Yes. Um, let's have a look. Are you going to, oh, uh, this is from Greenway. Are you going to write another dog, um, Dog Out, Dog Man Out book?
Oh, Dog Gone, or or Dog Out, or Dog Out.
Dog Out, good book.
Yeah, Odd Dog Out, but yeah, well, um, yeah, I said earlier, I'm doing the Christmas Odd Dog Out book. Um, so that one's coming. I keep, I do so many books with dogs in them, don't I? I guess it's because I've got a dog. I'm slightly obsessed with dogs, but I've done Dog Gone, the one I read to you, Odd Dog Out, and then Odd Dog Christmas. So yeah, that'll be my third dog book. I, I, lots of people say to me that I should write a cat book, and they're probably right. I have illustrated cat books, but I haven't written one. So um, maybe I should add that to my list too.
And Ian, Ian from Horwich and Chelmsford asks the classic question, which is, where do you get your ideas? From where do you get your ideas? Which is, we we have to ask that.
Of course, of course. Um, well, the the truth is, I don't really know. I mean, the only thing I do know is that they can come at any time. So I might be shopping in the supermarket or driving my car or in the shower, and an idea will just pop into my head. And um, I don't know about you, but whenever I have an idea, it pops into my head and then about ten seconds later, it disappears forever. So I have to write it down very quickly. So I have my phone with me at all times, obviously, because everyone does these days. And so I've got a big, like, long list of, like, book ideas in my phone. And most of the time, they're just like one sentence, you know, so I'll look at my phone again in the evening and it will say all these weird sentences. And one of them might be, you know, sausage dog doesn't fit in with other sausage dogs. Um, bear loses growl, penguin flies away with kite, you know, that kind of thing. That's how the idea comes. And then when it comes to the point where I have to talk to my publisher about what my next book's going to be, I sort of go through that list. There's hunters in this list. I go through and I work out which one has the most potential and then I sort of expand it and turn it into a full story. And apart from that, my children, my own children, they come up with ideas for stories for me. So like that one I mentioned, my book Kevin, uh, that came from my daughter who had an imaginary friend who basically turned up whenever she was in trouble. She would blame it on this imaginary friend. And she described what it looked like to me. So I drew this character literally sitting in front of her, she said, is this him? And she said, yes. And I wrote a story about him. Um, so basically, I think the ideas can come from anywhere. You just have to be ready to receive them. That's the key.
Brilliant. I'm I'm scrolling through these questions and the one stood out. Libby, can you do backflips?
No, is this short answer. I was very good when I was younger. I hadn't done it for a long time, but I was very good at handstands, weirdly. I could go up with my hands. I could stay up on my hands for about five minutes, but but that was a long time ago. I'm not sure I.
Let's not, let's not get you doing that now.
I'm not going to try it. I'm not going to try it. I've never had that question before, though. That's a good question.
That's a, that's a very new question. I don't think I've ever asked any author that question. I I was interviewing Jeffrey Archer the other week. You know what? That would have been a great question for him.
That would have been.
There was a question with somebody else I I saw earlier and I've lost it now, but um, Lexi from Swallow Class asked something similar. Who's your favourite author? But I was thinking, uh, and the question, the earlier question was about when you were growing up as a child. Did you have favourite authors, favourite books?
Um, well, uh, as I said, when I was growing up, there were things, the classic picture books were like, you know, Shirley Hughes, Doctor Hughes, um, Judith Carr, all those people were my, my favourites. And then slightly older books. Well, I really liked reading, um, when I was young, I was really into The Hobbit and The Lord of the Rings. And I still am. And I really read those relatively recently. And I really, I still really like those stories. And um, uh, apart from that, I mean, there's a lot, I read a lot, I really do read a lot of books now. The one, the one that I've read recently that I really, really loved, um, in terms of contemporary children's authors. Well, I really love Anjali Ralph's book, The Boy in the Back of the Class. That is absolutely brilliant. If um, any teachers have got children who are sort of eight, nine, ten, that kind of age, that's a really good one to read in class, I think. And I really love Catherine Rundle's book, so The Wolf Wilder Rooftoppers, and The Explorer. They are absolutely fabulous, fabulous stories, middle grade stories. So yeah, I do like to keep my hand in. Because I still read bedtime stories with my girls now, and they're slightly older than picture book range, so we read a lot of middle grade. So yeah.
Fantastic. Now, listen, all good things have to come to an end. We've got one minute to go. I've got to give a huge shout out to all those people's questions I've not. And so let let me do a Tia and Wilson and Isabel and Artie and um, I'm just going to, Hermione, Imogen from Long Maston, Ollie from St Bart's. There's just millions of you. Um, Greenway again, um, Josh from Bishopwood. There's honestly, I'm only a quarter way down the page, so I have so many, so many questions. I can see why you hold that world record. It's such enthusiasm. Now, a couple of bits. We've obviously got these books in stock. Um, they are signed. We've got signed copies with um, with Rob's signature in there. I can't find his signature. You should all have been given one of these. So do take it home and demand your parents buy you one of those signed books. That's the, that's the deal. And with that, you also get a free lovely little colouring in sheet. Know about this, but this was the Harper Collins sorted out for me, Jess. So that's it with our forty-five minutes. Rob, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you so much for inviting me and thanks for having me today. And thank you to everyone who has watched. And hopefully, fingers crossed, one day soon, I can come and see you in person. That would be lovely.
So it's a very short, um, short journey out from where you are to Tring. So yeah, do come and visit. Thank you all again, and um, we'll see you all very soon.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everyone.